We're going to call this meeting to order. This is the Weber County Commission meeting held today, August 6, 2019. We welcome you all here. It's good to have you at our meeting today. I'm Commissioner Jenkins. I have Commissioner Farrar and Commissioner Harvey with me. It's good to have both here today. Our invocation today will be given by Scott Park. Our pledge of allegiance will be given by Jim Harvey. Scott?
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are very grateful for this opportunity which we now have to meet together, Father, to discuss the matters of the community. We are grateful for this nation in which we live and for the opportunities and freedoms that we have. We are grateful, Father, for this ability that we enjoy as a community and pray that Thou will continue to bless us, that we may have that Spirit to be with us, that we may remember that we are all one and that we desire to serve Thee. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you'd all stand and repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Commissioner Farrar, your thought today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my thoughts center around the concept of opportunity. And this last week, fellow commissioners were able to take a tour of our up-and-coming new Salt Lake Airport. And to be quite frank, it was an amazing experience. It will change, in my opinion, it will change the face of Utah and will have a major impact on Weber County residents as well as everybody else. They talk about the number of guests that they, and the flights that will come in, number of people that will come into our state. And it will go from about, I think they said 11 million a year, up to about 25 million, over double. And believe me, the facility is an amazing facility. So I just look at that as an opportunity for the future, for our kids and ground kids that will have the opportunities that will be available to them for all sorts of things, from job creation to travel, you name it. It's going to change the face of this state. We look locally at the opportunity, as able to attend the Peter Pan play this past week with my granddaughter. And I'll tell you, that was an opportunity, right here, having our backyard a fantastic cultural event, a play that, you know, in my opinion, you could travel a long distance and not have anything better to offer to the public. That's an opportunity we have here, right in Weber County. I look at the opportunity that we talked about this morning with the Extreme Makeover coming into Weber County, that they'll be doing two homes in a 10-day period of time that Commissioner Harvey will be involved with. That's an opportunity that we see that will really have an impact on a lot of us and especially two families that will impact. We look at our county fair coming up this week. That would be an opportunity for everybody in this county to get out and mingle with their neighbors, share that experience, and really enjoy the benefits of being a resident and the opportunities that are afforded residents in Weber County. And lastly, Mr. Chair, so, you know, I was taught a long time ago that the art of living really starts with the gift of giving, that we only grow when we give. And when we give, we all raise ourselves just a little bit. Without that giving factor, we lose a lot in life. So as I was going through the Sunday paper, I saw the volunteer opportunities presented. And I don't know if you understand, but there, just in the paper, there's listed 40 opportunities, volunteer opportunities at local organizations, 40 opportunities for our residents to get out and give them themselves so they can help themselves grow. Including in that, I think will be noteworthy, is the Weber County Animal Shelter is looking for volunteers, the Gun Range, Union Station, you go through here, there's all sorts of opportunities for our residents to get out and give and better this county, better the city, and more importantly, better themselves. So it's about opportunity, the ability for us to grow and grow every day with what we have here in Weber County. That's my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Those are great thoughts. I have to agree with you about the Peter Pan. We went last night and took 27 of my grandkids, actually 21 grandkids, there's 27 of us total. And Cassie set us up in those boxes up in there. And those kids just had a hoot in there. When they started crowing on the stage, my daughter had to get up and put her hand over the mouth of one of my grandkids because they were crowing in the box. It was so funny to watch them. Those kids really got into that. That was a lot of fun. I enjoyed watching them much more than I enjoyed watching the play.
I'm sure that was a riot.
It was fun. Oh, that's good. Thanks, Commissioner Farrar. We appreciate you. All right, we go to public comments now, so if you'd like to address the commission, now's the time to do it, unless you're on the agenda, then we'll get to you there. But if you just want to address the commission, we put on the front end of this a moment, you can do that. So please come forward. Love to hear from you. No takers today. All right. Thank you very much. We'll go to the next item. Next item on our agenda, the consent items. Request for approval of warrants 1914 through 1928 and 441, 612 through 441, 798, in the amount of $1,898,381. That's a lot of money that goes through this county, and a lot of it is passed through, where we're passing it on to road construction projects and other things. But the county goes through a lot of money, so it's important. So we've reviewed those before we got here as commissioners. Second is approval of purchase orders in the amount of $164,543. Number three, approval of the minutes for July 23rd. Number four is approval of new business licenses. Number five, request for Weber County Sheriff's Office for approval of surplus kitchen equipment. Number six is request for Golden Spike Event Center for approval of surplus credit card processors and pin pads. Number seven is a request for approval of change order number three in a contract between Weber County and Saunders Construction for site and utility improvements at the Ogden Valley Library. Number eight is request for Weber County Tax Review Committee for approval of refunds in the amount of $1,160.15 to Stephen Schlang, parcel 16185005, due to the discrepancy of the square footage in the basement finish. Number nine is a request from Weber County Tax Review Commission for approval to refund $5,214.07 to Pilot Travel Center, LLC 744, due to tax collection based on incorrect taxing district. You know, it's funny, a lot of people say, "Well, I don't agree with our taxes," and then they don't do anything about it. And the county makes mistakes. There, you know, occasionally, it's not often, it's rare, but we do make mistakes. And there's an example right there of two occasions where we got the square footage off a little and a little bit of the taxing district got messed up. And it's not a lot of money, but it's money that we give back because we received it incorrectly. So it does happen. And it makes me happy to see that we try very hard, to be honest and straightforward, and give people what they feel that they need. So Ricky, would you like to go over the warrants?
You bet. Let's talk about purchase orders first. We issued 20 POs for $165,000. A third of that amount, or $54,000, is for the library. That will go primarily to purchase a storage area network, as well as books and supplies and computers for the Ogden Valley branch. 25% or $41,000 is for the shooting complex, and that is asphalt removal and concrete replacement. 22% or $36,000 is for our homeland security, urban search and rescue area, and that will go towards purchasing webbing harnesses and helmets. And then 12% or $20,000 is for IT, and that is to purchase network switches and software as well. As far as checks, we issued 200 checks for $1.9 million. 42% of that amount, or $789,000, is employee insurance and retiree insurance. And then 16% or $299,000 is some of that pass-through money that you were talking about. This is corridor preservation funds that will go towards the purchasing properties along the 3300 South project. And then we had two amounts for 9% or about $168,000. One is for the Ogden Valley Library, the construction and utility improvement that's going on up there. And then Rhodes is purchasing a loader. And that's it. One additional item of the appeals that we receive, we receive between 1,500 and 2,000 appeals each year for property valuation. I understand from the assessor that about 80% of those result in some kind of assessment change. A lot of people say, "I don't even want to apply because it's just not going to happen." You know, you guys have decided. But that's not the case. About 80% result in a change.
That makes me feel good to hear that. I mean, I don't like the fact that we're off, but when it comes to property valuations and everybody looks at them, so much different. And it's hard to get them exact. It's not an exact science. So that makes me feel good. We do that.
Yeah, that's good.
One of the things with regards to why appeals are important, as I've talked with you, Ricky, and John Bond and John Ulliberry, you know, we are experiencing a very robust economy in Weber County. I mean, we work to make it vibrant and good. But as a result of that, where people live, no matter who in this room, wherever you live, your neighbors are selling their houses for more than they ever have. We are in our third year now, according to information I received from John Ulliberry just yesterday regarding this, we're in our third year of double-digit increase with regards to the property values. And so we, when we do our tax, when we have our tax hearings, I hope people know that we, Weber County, and Ricky, if you could, you probably will say this better, but Weber County, we set a tax amount. And when a value, for instance, if somebody's being taxed $200, a general tax for $200 on a $200,000 home, if their home value increases 10% or to $220,000, that doesn't necessarily mean that their tax goes from $200 to $220. We have, the amount is fixed, not necessarily the rate. Because if the tax rate, the percentage rate were fixed, well, then they would still be 10% of the $200,000 or $220,000, if that's making sense. And so if your house goes from $200 to $220,000 in that particular circumstance, your general tax is still $200. Ricky, can you go on just a little on that?
You bet. And this is for the state of Utah. This, by law, is required. We're called a revenue-neutral state. So when it comes to determining property tax rates, the rate is actually the result of a calculation. And I compare it to a balloon. When the county sets its budget, it's like filling up a balloon and tying the knot, and that's the budget. There are only two ways to increase that balloon or increase the budget. One is truth in taxation hearings, which the administrative body says, "We want to raise, increase the taxes," so you have to go through truth in taxation. The other one is dictated by the state. They will say, "You had what's called new growth." So there have been some raw land that has been developed and improved, and they say in Weber County, "You had new growth of one-half of 1%, and so your budget can increase to accommodate and serve that new growth. It can increase by this amount." Other than that, you know, if every property in the county doubled in value, the county budget does not change.
Say that again.
If every property doubled in value, our budget, we don't get any more money because of that, because it's, by law, it's a revenue-neutral situation. It just means the tax rate drops to accommodate for that, to make sure that we stay revenue-neutral. It's a pretty complex situation because there are all sorts of other factors. When we receive our property tax bill, there are probably 15 different taxing entities listed on that bill, and any one of them could be raising or changing their rates going through truth in taxation. And that can have an impact on the property tax bill for an individual's property. But on a county basis, the only way we get more money as a county is by new growth or by raising the tax rate through a truth in taxation process.
Very good. Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a comment on that. And Ricky's exactly right with revenue-neutral. You know, our whole system in the state is based on fair market value. That's what our system is based on. So we depend on the assessor to come up with fair market value, whether that be an agricultural property or whether that be a home. I've had some experience in the past. I've put in a number of appeals on certain occasions. Some of them were justified, some of them were turned down, and, you know, I had to agree that the assessor had done a great job of coming up with fair market value, even though I probably disagreed in some cases. But the average homeowner, when they get that tax notice, and we've had, I had a number of people through the years contact me because they look for me for advice or comparables to make their appeal. And the first question that I ask them when they come into my office is, "Well, would you sell your property for the amount that the county says it's worth?" And a good share of the time, they say, "Well, no, I can't sell it for that. It's worth more than that." I say, "Well, if you wouldn't sell it for that, then why do you think it's worth less?" And they look at me strange, like, "Well, just, you know, just take the numbers and make them work." I said, "No, you need to be honest with yourself." And so what you're telling me is the county has done a fairly good job of accurately assessing your property. And I think the assessor as a whole does, they do good work up there. They look at the comps, and they're able to justify their value, which is an opinion. Keep in mind that any appraisal is simply an opinion of value. And you can have two different people with two different opinions. But it's my experience that the assessor does a very good job in a good share of the cases in coming up with fair market value, which is what we depend on.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. You know, it's interesting, in my business, I've got three large buildings, and we're always debating the value of them and if their taxes are fair. We call different realtors around to get an opinion from them, because they deal in this all the time. And I've, my brother's been calling Commissioner Farrar for 15 or 20 years, about every other year, to get his opinion, whether, and you know, when he's, we come up that things aren't quite right, we appeal it. And when he thinks that things are pretty close, then we don't. So anyway, I've used Commissioner Farrar for that very purpose. All right. Well, it sounds to me like we've beat this around. I'm ready to approve those consent items.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item F in its entirety, 1 through 9. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item F has been approved. Next up is item G. So Duncan is not here today, so Commissioner Harvey's going to take these. So item 1 is a request for approval of a contract binding between Weber County and Connie Neal for a secretary for the Fiesta 4H Horse Show, Youth Horse Show. Commissioner?
Thank you. This is, and they're setting up today. Most of you know of Dunn Events. Once the event's set up and things get going, things, it's, the hardest part is right now is during the setup. And so it'll start, the fair will start tomorrow at 11 o'clock. But this is for a secretary for the Fiesta Horse Show. It's pretty easy. That Fiesta Horse Show is like an open show. It's open to all breeds and classes. And so we're just looking for an approval to approve the secretary and her little contract. She gets a little, I would say, almost just a stipend to do that work for us out at the fair. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that contract.
What do you make of it?
I'll make that motion, that we do that.
I'll second.
We're good. We have motion and second to approve G1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. Item G2, request for approval of a contract binding between Weber County and Lonnie Judson for a judge at the Fiesta Horse Show.
Commissioner? We have a secretary, now we have a judge. If you're so inclined, I'll make the motion that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and Lonnie Judson to judge that Fiesta Horse Show.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved also. Item G3 is request for approval of resolution of the county, Weber County Commissioners, appointing a member of the Golden Spike Event Center Arena Board.
Commissioners, as you know, that on every property, every piece of real estate, house property, every property taxation notice enjoys a $1,311 tax credit. Now, it's not printed on your tax notice, but $1,311 is what the credit is based on the tourism that comes to Weber County each year. That's not our number. That's a number that comes from down there, from the State Division of Tourism. So we have a lot of tourism that comes because of the number of facilities we have. The Golden Spike Event Center brings in 600-plus events a year out there. Those people come from out of town, they spend their money, then they go home. Because they come from out of town, we usually have a representative from the hoteliers on that board, and we haven't had an active one there for a while. So the board has recommended that Tiffany Christensen, her home address is listed there, but I believe she's with the Comfort Suites and Holiday Inn Express out there at the end of 21st Street, has made an application. They feel really good about it. They've interviewed her and found her to be an acceptable candidate. So I would, if you're so willing, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution, I believe it's resolution number 49, to appoint Tiffany Christensen to the Golden Spike Event Center Arena Board.
Second?
Second, sir.
Second. Very good. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Item number four is request for approval of contract binding to Weber County and Fremont High School Dance Company to wash tables at the 2019 Weber County Fair.
Okay, great. Commissioners, this is during, when people go out to eat at the fair, they get up and they usually gather up their things and go throw them away. We sell a lot of food at the fair. Tens and tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. So in between, there are groups that come out, they have a little bit of sanitizing wash, and they wash those tables in between. Does two things. It makes a nice presentable table and product for the people, but it also helps keep the bugs down. So there's twofold. So I'll make a, if you're ready, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept, we have a contract binding between Weber County and Fremont High School Dance Company to wash tables during this year's 2019 Weber County Fair.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
I want to just state that I love the fact that our Weber County is putting contracted dollars back into the youth of Weber County. The same thing is true, and I would invite all of you who will hear this today and may hear this another day, to come to the Junior Livestock Auction this coming Saturday, the 10th of August, at 10:00 a.m. This is where local businesses put more than $600,000 into the pockets of Weber County youth. The youth that raise animals in Weber County sell them, and then they take that money and put it towards usually school or college or things like that. But last year was over $600,000. And so I would encourage everyone to come and participate in this year's Junior Livestock Auction this coming Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're now going to go to a public hearing. Occasionally, we have times where we need to amend things in our codes, and today's one of those times. We have Scott Park here that's going to present as our budget, and we're going to have to change parts of it, and then Charlie Ewer is going to present to us. So with that in mind, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adjourn our public meeting and reconvene in a public hearing. Second?
I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in a public hearing. So, Mr. Park, we'll go to you first. Good to have you here today.
Thank you, Commissioners. As you mentioned, you know, we set our budget in, we start in August. Actually, we're about ready to start the budget for the next year. And so we're doing that more than a year in advance, and so sometimes things change during the year, and we need to make some adjustments. So you have before you a resolution with a summary of adjustments for the 2019 operating and capital budget, and I'll just hit a couple of the highlights. We needed $300,000 for the fleet to purchase and a grader for the Rhodes Department. We're selling some old equipment and using that money to buy some new equipment. We've received several large grants, one of which being a $750,000 grant from the state of Utah for the archery range, and so we need permission to accept that money and spend it. We had some requests for some new employees, one in our building inspections to help keep up with the workload, one at the transfer station for the same reason. And we had to make some changes to several employees' FSLA status, and that's going to cost us a little bit of money to make sure we're complying with those federal statutes. Our workers' compensation expenditures have come in higher than we've anticipated just because of some of the claims, so we need an additional $230,000 to help cover those increased costs. The library would like to spend some of their fund balance that they have saved over the years to help improve some of their library facilities. And then we have some new revenues and expenditures that we'd like to spend as well. So the fair's generated more revenue than they had anticipated, so they want to spend that money to help cover those costs of services. So if you have any specific questions on any of those items, I'm happy to go in those. We've reviewed all of them with you previously and have you sign off on all of those, so there shouldn't be anything new here that you haven't already seen. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to address those at this time.
Questions, Commissioners?
Scott, can you tell me what the escrow release was?
So what we do is we collect money from developers, and we hold it until they do improvement. So if they have to cut across our road, we're going to hold that money until they finish their improvement, and then we release that money back. We do an estimate of how much money's going to come in and how much money's going to go out in the year, and we're just off a little bit. It's really pass-through money. It's not our money to keep. We do it as a budget change anyway, just to make sure that we're okay with the statute, but it's really not our money to begin with.
Okay. That's my question, since we're just holding these funds for completion of the project, but you still have to include this in the budget line?
We have, just to be on the safe side. We've had some differing opinions whether we need to or not, but we thought, well, we're just going to throw it on there just to be safe.
Okay. Thank you.
It's interesting, that building, archery building, $750,000. We were in fear of losing that, so we jumped on it really quick and got it going. And it's all but done, or ready to start to be put up. It's a simple thing, and man, once we've got to that point, it's amazing how hard it is to get it up. We've tried, you know, to get that building put up, and anyway, we're still messing around with it. So I was hoping by now that that pad would be poured and the building would be up.
Yeah. Well, it's coming. We're waiting for the engineering and some of the other approvals with regards to culinary water, and we keep pushing. We'll make some progress, more progress on that today. The nice thing is, is with that archery building, that $750,000 is all money that's not coming from within Weber County, but were grants or gifts or money that have come from other places. So that'll just be another nice thing for Weber County residents.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. We appreciate it. Are there others, if there are those who've come to comment on this portion of the public hearing today, our budget, please come forward. Now's the time. If you'd like to complain or argue or ask questions even, if you want to be nice to us. Nobody wants to be nice, but nobody wants to play. So that's good. All right. We'll go to the next portion of this public hearing, which is a request for approval of ordinance amendment titled 101 and 106. Mr. Ewer, will you explain that to us?
I sure will. When we adopted the cluster subdivision code, the new one, last year, there was a reference to slopes outside of the cluster subdivision code buried deep in the buried deep in the, um, typical subdivision code. Uh, the reference to slopes, our previous cluster subdivision code basically said, "You have to reduce, you have to subtract out all of the area over a certain slope in order to calculate your, um, total density." We removed that in favor of incentivizing the use of the, uh, cluster subdivision code. Um, we just failed to acknowledge that this particular paragraph still existed in a different section. So, uh, as you look at your, uh, the ordinance proposal, the text that's there, the second paragraph that you see with all the strikeouts in there, we're suggesting to remove that. As we were, uh, reviewing this with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, um, they mentioned that they want to see the definition of net developable acreage also change. So, net developable acreage today requires, um, if you imagine, uh, the, the slopes being reduced to determine how much density you can get, you also have to reduce, uh, your total acreage by ten percent, uh, which were assumed road, road acreage. Um, but that's an assumption. That's not, uh, an accurate representation of what a developer might propose. So, what the Ogden Valley Planning Commission asked for is for that to change, to say, "Just the area of road space that the developer actually proposes, not an assumed, um, static or constant number." So, we removed the ten percent and just put in there, whatever, whatever the developer's proposing should be removed from that density calculation. Any questions?
You, you, that is fair?
Uh, yeah. In fact, I think what this does is it incentivizes, even further incentivizes the use of the cluster subdivision tool in the toolbox. So, it might end up in another one or two lots for the developer, which in turn can help them, uh, cluster, uh, which is, I think, what the Ogden Valley General Plan is asking for.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
No, I thi, this is good. It's just, I, I view it as, uh, cleaning things up and no problem.
All right.
H.
Mr. Chair, so, um, I need to, to declare a conflict on this particular issue when it comes to, to voting. I've checked with legislative, uh, B&amp;H Investments, actually, Kevin and Steve are both clients in the past and, uh, current clients of mine, so, uh, I wasn't aware until I read this yesterday that they've made this ordinance proposal. I'm, obviously, this makes sense for more than, impacts more than just their subdivision, but because it came through, uh, B&amp;H, that it's, I think it's, uh, important that I declare a potential conflict. I've been through that with legal counsel, uh, very much like we did in the legislature. I followed, what we've done in the state is to declare the conflict and then leave it up to counsel whether, uh, they felt that it was appropriate for me to place a vote on it or not. But I wanted to be, uh, totally clear with, uh, fellow commissioners.
Sure. Um, as it's a legislative item, I don't believe it prohibits you from voting unless the other two members of the commission believe it's a, a conflict which would require, require recusal. Uh, if not, you're, you're free to vote on the matter, uh, as long as you've declared the conflict, which you have.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I did declare that conflict.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Now would be the time, if you have come to comment on this, uh, uh, this, uh, specific action, H-three, in our, uh, public hearing, please step forward. Nobody's going to comment, huh? Okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn our public hearing and reconvene a public meeting.
Very good.
Second?
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back into our public meeting. We're now in a position to take action on these. Would either of you care to make a motion?
I'll, I'll go ahead. Okay, I'll make a motion on the first item, number H, like Hotel Two. I'll make a motion, uh, that it's a resolution that we amend the two thousand nineteen Weber County budget, regu, resolution five zero dash two zero one nine, uh, to those, uh, changes or those adjustments that were presented by Mr. Park today.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Forre?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. Commissioner Harvey?
I'd like to make a motion, again, Mr. Chair, if you'll recognize.
I will.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending titles one oh one and one oh six in the, the land use code for cluster subdivisions. It would be ordinance number fifteen dash, I think it's just ordinance fifteen, isn't it, Fatima?
Yeah, they all say two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I think so. The dash, two thousand nineteen indicates the year, so.
Ordinance fifteen.
Second.
And I have a second from Commissioner, well, in fact, I think I'll second that.
That'd be good.
Yeah, just to make sure. So, I will second that, to keep, uh, Commissioner Forre out of this conflict.
Great.
Directly. So, with that, Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Forre?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Uh, that is, uh, cleans those up, and Charlie, uh, we got you taken care of, and Scott, thank you for your efforts on behalf of our budget. It's nice to keep this clean and up to the point. Commissioner comments? Either, either of you care to comment today?
Looking forward to the next three days at the fair. Actually, I guess, four days.
Four days. Yeah. You know, we got a lot going the next four days between the fair, and we've got some special budget meetings that I had to schedule in here.
That's right.
And I'm telling you, uh, you are going to be doing everything you can do to get back and forth from there, including, we have, uh, a steak fry for, uh, uh, all the politicians in the region, and we have, we got a ton going.
Is he? It's wonderful. So, we have a lot of new activities this year's fair. It'll be, uh, changes, a lot of changes this year. It'll be fun.
Pull your boots on and get your hats ready. Here we go. Well, if that's the case, uh, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.